Welcome everyone, I'm so glad you're here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call please?
Sure.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Kellogg.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Pullen.
Here.
Hofstadter.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Alright, we'll start with community events. So, um, we have quite a bit happening this Saturday, actually. Our CSB Community Party is from 1 to 4. We have the Air Force Band at the Courthouse at 7:00. And then, um, Newtown Gallery is having a Arts Beating Giving, event. If you would like tickets for that, you can get onto ORMACO.com for tickets. And your tickets will include two wine tickets. Um, heavy appetizers is what I was told. So I'm imagining I can fill my plate with appetizers. That's what I'm thinking. Um, and then they're having local bands play at Newtown Gallery. So that might be something you guys want to check out. Author Brandon Wies on August 22nd is going to be at the library. Uh, registration is required, it's for adults and teens. Um, Brandon wrote the book called This Is Going to Hurt, which I have not read, but if any of you have read that, check that out. Uh, Family Movie Day at the Library is August 24th at 11:00 a.m., um, the movie If. And then we have a lot of other things happening throughout September and October, and I will post that on my webpage. So that's what's happening. The bicentennial update, the next bicentennial meeting is August 20th at 5:30 at the Chamber. And they have, we've moved up in the world, is what I'm going to say, because we now can do it on Zoom too. So if you can't be there, were you worried?
Yeah.
Kelly's announcing something that I don't even know, and I'm in charge. No. Um, so if you can't be there, you can be there via Zoom. I was on via Zoom last time, and it was pretty awesome.
It'll work right next time.
It'll, it'll, it'll work right. We've, we've got it under control now. But we can keep talking, and everybody can be there. The Antique Festival Parade, Sunday, October 6th. Please plan on being there and bringing candy to throw. Um, Mill Street Photography is going to do pictures on courthouse steps Saturday, October 5th of the Antique Festival for elected officials. And so I'm going to try and get letters sent out to all the elected officials. Um, I, I really would like as many of you guys there as possible, because these are the pictures we're going to put in the time capsule. Okay?
They're in. They're in. The time capsules.
They're in? We will put them in? Oh, the time capsules are all, themselves are in? I was like, yeah, we're going to put these back in. We're doing it. That's what they're for.
They're here.
Okay, the time capsules are here. So that, that brings me to our next, um, thing. The Time Capsule for Millersburg. Um, I would like for everyone to talk to your constituents and see when they think would be a good time for us to fill our time capsule and seal it up. My first thought was we should kick off Thunder Over Holmes County next year, since it'll be the end of the official bicentennial celebration. Um, that we have a little ceremony and fill our time capsule and seal it up. But I'm open to any and all suggestions. So if you guys want to talk to some people, and if anybody has any ideas, please reach out to your council members or myself, and, uh, let us know when you think we should do the time capsule. Because I would like the maximum amount of people there that we can. I think that, I think it's going to be really neat. So that's what I have for bicentennial. Do we have any visitors that wish to address council at this time? No? Yeah?
Uh, the trailer park down there in South Town.
Uh-huh.
Has been pretty bad here lately. And I'd like to just say a few things about, uh...
Sure, do you want to come up here?
Yeah.
And state your name, that way we'll have it in the official record.
Uh, my name is Jeremy Woodman. And I've been living down there at the, uh, trailer park for going on two years now. And it's just been ongoing stuff that's been going on down there. And trash is not being picked up. People just throwing stuff everywhere. And I do have pictures of things as well, if anyone wants to see those. And it's just an ongoing thing about, uh, copper and stuff like that. And I'm just getting that basically.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I went, I went down there. I, I've been making phone calls about the trash problem for about three weeks, almost four weeks. So the dumpster that's down there is overfilled, as you know.
Yeah.
There's like a pile of four, four decks on top of, plus what's around the front.
Yes, for like four weeks.
The trash truck did come by the other day, but I think he refused to dump it.
Yeah, he, the, Kimball said that because of that excess, it's too dangerous for them to dump it, because they have to pick it up and dump it in the top of their truck, you know?
I know that.
Yeah. And so I contacted the trailer park, and they know that they need to get another one to get rid of the excess, so that that dumpster can go. The, the dumpster has been paid up, but they also canceled that contract for the dumpster. So when they can dump it, it will go away. Because, as you know, everybody pays for their own trash with the water bill.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, um, that, they, they canceled that dumpster. And the, the issue, I think, the way it started was they only had pickup once a month for that dumpster.
Yeah.
That's all that they, that was all they had.
Everyone has been using it like it's their own personal dumpster.
Right.
As well, and that shouldn't be...
Because everyone else puts stuff in the middle of their trailer, and they come individually and dump everybody's. But the dumpster, they've been taking advantage of it, and it's just overheating.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
And it should not be, it should not look like that.
Right. The ownership told me last week that they will be getting another dumpster to clean that out. I also have a local church that is willing to, um, pay for a dumpster to get that cleaned up and get that out, because I, I was down there, and I was by that dumpster for, I don't know, 20 minutes, and I saw two rats. So I completely understand where you're coming with the cop, because it's just going to make another problem staying down there, so...
And the people who we live beside, there's not much in better either. They're the ones that we're having problems with the most as well.
Just the more...
We didn't have no problem, not the late night.
Yeah.
They just, it's disgusting how they live.
Yeah, that's...
And, uh, there are people living down there with no power, living out of their vehicles as well, just so you know. I want to bring that to your attention as well.
The ones sitting by the room.
Closest to the room, the right across directly from...
Dollar General.
Dollar General area.
Okay. Well, we will make a phone call to Eric Vincent and let the ownership be aware of those things.
And I know if they can't pay the power, they're not paying anything else either. And I, I'm not...
And there's trash all over the yard.
Exactly.
And on their porch, I mean, it's just inked with stuff.
I just want to make my point and comments. Uh, I do have to work tonight, because I work third shift, so I was going to make mine short and sweet and just leave, if that's alright with you guys?
That's, that's completely fine. We appreciate you coming and telling us what's going on.
I just wanted to boost my opinion based on stuff.
I'm just curious, before you go, is, has something changed in the last, you know, six months, a year, that the trash has become an issue, or has it always been an issue? I'm just curious if anything has changed on the trailer park front that suddenly has become an issue?
The dumpster? The thing with the dumpster?
This has happened twice, where they haven't dumped it, it's overheating.
Twice this year?
Not as bad as what it is now.
It wasn't that bad last year.
It wasn't that bad. Previous times that they didn't pay the bill or something like that, uh, it wasn't as full, but then when they did get it paid, they did dump it. But this is by far the worst I've seen it. And my wife does have a recent photo right now of the way it sits. If you'd like to see it.
Of the dumpster?
Yeah.
Show it to me.
So is this related to the, the management company not paying for the dumpster?
No, but they paid for it, and they can't, it, it was paid up until the month of July, and they canceled it for July. But Kimball couldn't come and pick it up, because it's like four deep. Yeah, you can show the council members, I was just down there today to see.
There's the couch that's there.
I've noticed in the last couple of weeks it's, it's getting trashy.
See how they're, it's, it's full in the dumpster, but then they stack stuff on top of the dumpster and around the bottom of the dumpster.
And there's another side of it, but see how that is?
Yeah, see how much it's stacked out there, and so...
And there's just stuff, yeah.
So why, why is something like the, the couch? Why is that big? Do you guys have options to...
I don't know, I mean, they're, they're wanting to get rid of it, but they're not taking it.
They, they put all types of stuff out.
It's just, they just keep adding to it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's gotten, yeah, see, all that stuff's on top of it.
All kinds of stuff like that.
Probably late at night, it becomes a catch-all for whatever people can chuck in there.
Right, for whatever people want to get rid of, right, right.
It's definitely happening late at night where they're moving the trash.
And right there's the couch.
Right.
Yeah.
What's, what's it cost to pick up a dumpster?
Well...
What's, what was their fee?
The, the dumpster is paid for, and they canceled it, but...
I guess my question is, how much does it cost to get another dumpster?
That, that I don't know, because the dumpster is what they take care of.
Right.
And the only thing we pay for is our, our trash that we put out in front of our place with our own cans. But the dumpster...
The dumpster is paid for by the ownership.
Ownership or management or whatever. Now, this trailer we are talking about across from Dollar General, this is the trailer, this is the van, and look at their porch. It's just...
Can you take that down and show the other council members, please?
Kelly, when you say that they canceled the dumpster, the, the management company or Kimball canceled?
The management company paid the bill through July, and then said, we want you to come and take it up.
I've seen it when I drive by.
And take it away. But they can't do that until the stuff around it. And then their yard...
And they're aware of that. It's just...
The, the management company is aware of that. And they, and I was told last week that, yeah, we're getting a dumpster, we're going to get it in here this week. But as, I went down there today to look, and there wasn't anything. So, we, we may go with plan B.
Not the porch, not the sign.
And get the church that wants to get a dumpster involved and get that taken care of.
Okay.
And then there's the...
That's right, where the house, or one burned, it's right in front of it.
It's right beside the one that burned, but yeah.
Yeah.
And then here's their, uh, the deck right there. It's just covered with...
You can see it from the rosewood.
Yeah. It's, it's nasty.
Not, not for once a month pickup.
Well, that would draw a few rodents.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's, that, that's just how bad it is. And that, it should be a clean environment around there. There should not be trash laying all over the place like that. That's just not how people should live. I mean, our place don't look like that. We take care of our environment. It's just the people that don't, that don't respect it, it's just... It's disgusting.
Yeah.
It just makes you sick to, to see that, like, how could you live like that? I, I couldn't.
Yeah.
And not, because we, we don't live that way.
Right. Well, thank you both so much. And, and I know that it doesn't seem like things are in the works, but they, they really are.
I just...
Well, we appreciate you guys hearing us.
I just want someone to come in and maybe show you a few pictures of what we're seeing in the past, and hopefully something can be done on it.
Yeah.
If you excuse me, I have to get ready for...
No, you go to work, have a good night at work.
Well, why don't you do me a favor and just sign in back there, just so I have your...
Oh, I got that though, thank you.
Thank you, yep, have a good evening. Anybody else wish... Come on down!
A little bit slow.
That's alright.
My name's Jill Smith, and I have the L-shaped ranch house on the corner where you turn in to go back to Lakeview Edition and old East Jackson Street. And we had a gas problem with the gas line out there, and the gas company came and dug up and supposedly fixed the line. Well, I went back through all my gas bills, and the first one I noticed was my gas bill for the month of, that was April, that I received the 1st of May, was $668.
Shoo.
My gas bill in January, when it was whole, was $263. So I really got to investigating, and I've been talking to Northeast Ohio Gas. Now tomorrow, they're coming to shut our gas off, because I have galvanized pipe, and they're taking the meter out, and they won't turn it back on until I replumb on my house with my plumber and get the, the pipes changed. And I take medicine, it's $78,000 a month, and I'm considered a hardship case, but I still have $8,000 to pay. I can't afford to replumb my whole house. I don't know what I'm going to do, and as of tomorrow, I won't have hot water, and I won't have any heat.
Well, uh, they've been doing, they've been changing the meters all around town, and what they do is a pressure test to see if you have a leak, and that's what they're going to do. So I don't know...
They aren't going to replace it tomorrow. The man told me that they were replacing the meter.
Well, yeah, they'll, they'll come out, but before they turn your gas back on, they'll do a pressure test, and if you pass the pressure test, you won't need to do anything.
He said if I had galvanized pipe, they would turn it on.
Well, if you pass the pressure test, it really shouldn't matter what pipe you have. As long as you pass the pressure test, you should be okay.
I've been fine, I mean, my furnace comes on, I have heat, I have hot water. And I thought, how, how...
You don't smell gas anywhere in your house?
Well, I didn't either.
Yeah.
Who did you talk to at Northeast Ohio Gas? Mike or Jay or...
I had a young man that came to the house today and told me he was changing the meter.
Okay, Northeast Ohio Gas hired a third party to do that?
Yeah, and he was part of, yeah, he was part of that.
Right, to do that. And so what they do is they're going to come, take out your old meter, put in a new meter, and then they'll do a pressure test. And we've had people, there, I know of two houses up on Fairview Avenue about three weeks ago, and they had to have Kleins or Peppers come in and replace a pipe, not all the pipes, but a pipe, or a couple pipes. Um, but I, I haven't heard of anybody having to replace all the pipes in their house.
So I had, I, I kind of tried to tell everybody what was coming. So this happened to me.
Okay.
I tried to tell everybody this was coming. So what ended up in our situation was, um, things had loosened, fasteners like the, like to the, the pipe to the furnace. So when I had Peppers come in, they just were able to tighten those things, and so I was fortunate, I didn't, so it could just even be something like that.
So if they do this pressure test, and they find that I have something in the house that's leaking, then I have a plumber come and fix it that, and then...
And they will try to find where the leak is and just fix that.
But they probably, now listen, I was very fortunate. Peppers was able to get there, but I'm, I'm paying...
They need a plumber, I mean, everybody's so busy.
You may have to pay emergency, um, double the labor.
Well, I have a plumber that I use from Lakeville, who's really good. I've already got him scheduled to come for a plumbing problem, so it'll work out.
Well, good, then, the, once they do the pressure test, you should know. Because if they do the pressure test and everything's okay, then they'll just hook you back up and you'll be fine.
And it doesn't matter that you have galvanized pipe, because that's what the man told me today, was if I had galvanized pipe, they wouldn't turn the, um, gas back on. The gas co...
I'm not sure...
But that was the contractor that told you that, not Northeast Ohio Gas?
Right.
Well, a lot of times people speak, I mean, I would wait to hear it from Northeast Ohio Gas.
I can give you a phone number to call, and you can talk to him. He, he is a supervisor at Northeast Ohio Gas.
Alright. I'm ready.
Okay, his name is Randy.
Okay.
His phone number is 330-340-0002. And he's probably not going to be very happy I did that in a public council meeting.
Everybody right there?
But if you have questions about what you can and can't have, or anything like that, you call him and he can answer your questions.
Alright.
Okay? You're welcome. Alright, we're on a roll, anybody else? No? Alright, let's move right along then. Um, do we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes?
I'll second.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve minutes?
Make a motion to approve, Khan?
Second.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Alright, Bill Resolution 2024-15. Are there any questions on the bills totaling $288,566.38? Hearing none, do we have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved. I'll second, Khan?
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen? Okay, Nate?
Alright, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 10th. They recommended approval of a rezoning application from the Kroskies at 50 No Name Street, that's the old laundromat. Uh, they're requesting a change from R3 to special use to allow for a wellness slash yoga studio to go in. The next step in this would be a public hearing. We have to have those 30 days out from advertising, so earliest we could do that is September 23rd. Is that okay with everybody? 6:50? Agreeable? Okay, we'll get that advertised. They also, the board also approved the inclusion of six additional lots to Phase 1 of the Stenwood Development, pending them finishing the widening of Sill Street, which I talked to Melway last week about, they're working on that, getting that lined up. They recommended approval of the proposed legislation that you have tonight to Amendment 116603. We also discussed an ordinance to amend storage facility use in commercial zoning districts. We didn't have full board anymore by the end of the meeting, so decided to table that for, to get everybody a chance to have feedback on that. So that'll be coming. Uh, 2024 Resurfacing Project, everything is done now other than the intersection of, um, East Jones Street. We're waiting on the phone and cable companies to move their lines off of the AAP pole, so it can be completely removed. And once that's done, the intersection, the guardrail can be, guard, guardrail and pole can be removed, and then the intersection paved and restripped. And then they're also going to strike Glenn Drive as part of that contract as well. Pavement technology was in and completed the cemetery reclamation work, so that's all done. We're just waiting on Jones Street really.
Have they given any indication on if they're going to be able to remove that pole, or when they're going to be able to come?
No, I'm, I'm not able to get answers. I've been, I've been bugging them. Our items that we've been working on, capital items, loader is September delivery, still on, on track for that. The Street Department Storage Building, we got three quotes on that building. MCS contracting was the lowest out of Kilbuck. So we awarded that to them for $73,841. The office improvements, I hope everybody noticed, everything's done here now. Well, not everything, there's, there's a little strip of brick that's painted red that I never noticed until they put the brown siding up next to it, and now it sticks out like a sore thumb. Drives me nuts every time I look at it. We'll get that painted to match. So that's all done. I left a message with Sign Design, I've been trying to get with them. I'd like to read, or look at redoing our signage here at the building. Instead of, on the south wall, there was a sign mounted flat to the wall. I'd like to get a projecting sign that sticks out from the building. Maybe something simple, Villatown Police Department. It'd be a lot more visible. And we do get a lot of people asking, where are you at, where are you at, you know? I think that'd be a lot better. Maybe updating the sign right outside the door here. Uh, and then also get them looking at possible redesign or, or options for the entrance signs around town. I think we've talked about this before, we had them redone quite a few years ago. Uh, it's probably between five and 10 years ago now, and we were told at that time, that's the last time they can paint them. The woods just getting so porous and open that they can't resurface them. So hopefully get some good options on that and move forward. Airport Park Vasco is in and installed the fence and net footers and the net systems for the two new courts. They still have to do the recoding of the surface of the courts. And then Premier Fence was also in and put the backstop fabric on the backstop at the ball field.
I, I gotta stop you, Nate. It, it warmed my heart to see all those pickleball players down there over the weekend. It was packed down there.
Well, Chad and I were at lunch the other day, and Brock Baker came over and thanked us profusely. He was very, very happy about the new courts down there, the additional courts, and, uh, said, you know, much needed, they've been well-used already. We got the left-turn-only sign up at, at Monroe and Jackson Street. So we, we now have a sign closer to Crich, or, yeah, by Crichfield Street, between Crichfield and 241. There's a sign on the side of the road with the lane designations. There's pavement markings, and there's this new sign, so I don't know what else to do. If there's still issues there, and we, there's three different devices telling people what, what the lanes are for, I, I'm out of ideas, short of...
Ticket 'em.
Ticketing, I guess.
That's a good idea.
Chief's department, not mine, so... So I, it, it'll certainly help, it's far more visible up there than the advanced sign would be off to the side of the road. If there's cars parked, I can understand, so... But that's done. Uh, the auction we had for our surplus equipment ended Thursday night, and it was, it was a lot of fun watching the, the closing bell. It, it got frantic on the vehicles, there was bidding wars. It was a lot of fun to watch. Uh, we ended up getting a total of $22,908, and the backhoe didn't sell, it didn't meet the reserve, so we did well. The Explorer, the Cruiser brought $51.26. The 150 brought $35.50. F-350 brought $5,600. The dump truck brought $66.50. The sweeper brought $1,600. The scoreboards brought $22. Somebody got a deal on a cool piece of memorabilia. And the salt spreader brought $360. It was a $10 when I looked at it, like 4 o'clock. And like, it, it just got crazy. It was, it was fun to watch, it really was. On the backhoe, we put a reserve of $22.5 on it, On the backhoe, we put a reserve of twenty-two-five on it because that's what Southeastern Equipment offered us on the trade-in for the new loader. And they were, they said try to sell it for more, if not, we'll take it for twenty-two-five, so. We're sitting great on that, it's, it's really encouraging. Uh, thought is interesting, remember when we sold our back truck, it went to Alaska? The Explorer is going to Colorado and the F-one-fifty's going to Michigan. And the spreader, the salt spreader box was bought out of New Jersey. So it's, it's interesting to see where things end up, everything else was in Ohio. Pretty cool. Uh, Troy Snyder started on July twenty-ninth, Chad Klein started last week. He's back here, if anyone wanna chat with him after the meeting, or call him up and embarrass him right now if you want. Both doing very well, glad to have them. Uh, I've got some credit requests. One fifty-six, South Matt Anthony had a leak upstairs bathroom, went through the ceiling, not into the sewer.
Oof.
Uh, twelve thousand dollar, or twelve thousand gallon credit request for the sewer portion of the bill, twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Seven eighteen Crichfield Street, their pit meter was leaking, water went in the ground obviously, not the sewer. Again, sewer portion of the bill, request of seven thousand gallons for sixteen dollars and forty-five cents. Twenty-four South Clay Street, copper line in the, in a copper elbow split and ran into the street in the basement. Hundred and forty-three thousand gallon leak requesting a credit of three hundred forty-three dollars and twenty cents. And that wasn't a vacant office, so understandable, I got that big before anybody noticed it. So you can do those simultaneous or separate, however you're comfortable. Do you need a motion to approve it if you so desire?
So moved all together?
All together.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
I believe that's all I had, thank you.
I got a question for Chad. Are you ready to go to Columbus with, uh, Roberta to a grant writing seminar?
Do it with us together?
Yep.
Then since we're like two years old, so. Yes, if that's what needs.
That's what's needed.
That's what Bob wants.
I wanted to spring that on you, so.
All right, thank you Nate. Chief?
I have a few things, um, first, before I forget it. Uh, the Truck Parade, Transport for Christ, and the big semis, all the trucks came through last year. Uh, is gonna be on September fourteenth. Somewhere around six o'clock, and last year they were almost half hour to ten hour early, so, um, I'm telling people between five and six. Don't go, everything should be solidified this week. Um, not gonna be any layers this week to, to set up completely on time or solidify the times for it, but. Pretty much the same time as last year, just depends on how quick they, they get through and where else. Uh, I start up in Wayne County, I don't know if they start from Mount Eden, they come down through Mount Hope, through Berlin, they come through and go out to the fairgrounds, so. And it'll be, you know, probably just be like last year, it'll be rolling escort, get them through town. Went pretty smooth last year, so hopefully it'll go the same way this, this year. Um, the other thing is August third, um, if you guys seen my post or not, I was up at the Love Center for Touch a Truck. Um, Love Center and thirteen or fourteen area churches do, do a, uh, community, giving supplies for the schools. Um, one of the churches I did shoes and I can't remember, there's a third church, but I don't remember what they did. So, I slept there in the rain with the, the fire guys, um, kids seemed to enjoy it, didn't care, you know, that they were getting rained on, so. Wasn't downpour, downpour, rode back, but, um, definitely got wet, we were up there for a couple hours. It was a good time, everybody enjoyed it, so. Uh, the last thing is, we've had one Bible applicant, um, for the full-time patrolman position. We do not have, um, his home visit done yet, but we're not expecting anything and that's to be done tomorrow. So with that, I would like to, um, present to council the hiring Logan shows. The starting rate twenty-six fifty-six for the patrolman position, pending his home visit is fine. I just don't wanna wait until next council meeting to bring you before you guys, or bring his name before you guys, so. If I can get your guys' approval or do that, we can move forward. If everything goes good tomorrow, we look at his start date as August thirty-first.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you Chief. Bobby? Sorry, keep running.
It's okay, it's okay. All right, um, so July financials came out, you guys, you guys all acknowledged that, thank you for that. Um, the only other thing I have is that the Attorney General, uh, for the state, uh, has released a mandatory training for all, um, public employees, public officials. So basically, if you work for the public, you gotta do this training. So I set out a little information pack for each of you that explains the process, it's all done online, it's super quick, super simple. You're not even quizzed at the end. So, um, everybody needs to do that. There are two pieces of, of information I need, once you complete that course. It is the certificate that you're issued, once you complete it, once you're done watching the video, and you cannot fast-forward. Once you get done watching the video, um, there's a little, a little icon that's gonna pop up that looks like a little ribbon, like a certificate. Um, you wanna click on that, and then you can, um, you can either print that if you can, or you can save it and email it to me. I don't care how you send it to me, you can even screenshot it on your phone, I had somebody do that to me too, if you do this from your phone. Um, and if any of you are like lost on the computer, um, stop in. Um, Marty and I will help you, whoever's here, we will help you, um, get it going and start it and get your certificate printed. The other piece of information that I need is there's an acknowledgement form that each of you have. So once you do the training and get your certificate to me, I also need the acknowledgement form to go along with that, so. I think we're, most everybody, um, most of the employees have already gotten theirs back to me, so it's cruising along. And that needs to be, there's a, um, a mandatory deadline for that at the end of September, so we're pushing to get it done by the end of this month, so we don't have to worry about it anymore, so. Any questions about that? Okay, that's it.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Bob?
Thank you. Uh, the update on the standard issue is the legislation you have before you, uh, two thousand twenty-four oh six. If any of you have any questions about any of that, um, I believe that we got everything that we wanted. So hopefully we can have the first reading and get this out of the way. And if anybody has any questions, we're glad to have them, any questions?
It was nice that they came back with a common sense response to.
Yeah, 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 because the first response was not common.
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, upcoming committee meetings, we have the police committee meeting at six-thirty on the fifteenth, that's this week. Um, next week on the twenty-first, Tree City at four P M, business and housing at six P M. And then our next council meeting will be on the ninth of September. Um, is that all I've got? I think that's all I got for that. All right, any committee reports? We had a business and housing committee meeting. Um, the business and housing committee unanimously wanted council to discuss, um, and vote on the letter to West Holmes Local School District. The letter essentially discusses how we would like to work with the school district. And then, are there any questions on the letter? We had it in our council packet last week. No?
Could we see the letter, or?
It can, I don't know.
It was in the council packet last, last month, sorry, not last week.
Yeah.
I can get you the copy Bob, so that you have a copy.
Okay.
Yeah. So, at the business and housing committee, they were upset that we did not discuss it at the last council meeting. Um, and so they are interested in having council talk about this and vote on this letter one way or another. Do you have anything to add, gentlemen?
I would just add that I think I've reviewed the letter. I thought it was where, you know, we, from the building and, and housing committee and from village council, you know, feel that it's appropriate to put ourselves out there and, and make it known that we have an interest in the property. And the content of the letter, I believe, needs to, to be given to the board, West Holmes School Board, uh, so that they understand very clearly what our position is. I think the letter should, should be sent out.
I agree, and thank you Bob for drafting that for us. Um, yeah, again, it just lays out the benefits of, uh, proceeding with that property as, as we desire, so.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Do we have a, a decision, do we own the deeds of the properties?
No.
We do not.
We do not. The Village of Millersburg and Hardy Township gave that property to West Holmes Local Schools. As a gift.
So the deed's not in our name?
It belongs to the school.
And there's nothing in it that says it reverses back to?
Right. Any other questions?
That popped my bubble.
A lot of bubbles, I'm sure.
Do we have a motion to approve to send the letter to West Holmes Local School Board?
Make a motion, Con?
I'll second it. Con?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen? Hofstadter?
Aye.
Okay, um, in line with the school, school is getting ready to start this week. And so please be aware of buses and kids out walking, um, because we're gonna be getting that started back up. So, I hope you, all you kids have a wonderful year at school this year. We got a smile in the back, that's good, at least you're not frowning.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I suggest rather than mailing this letter to the school, that we go and present it to them versus mailing it so that any questions they might have?
We can absolutely do that.
Can be, can be answered, I think it's pretty, it's a better approach than just simply mailing a letter and notice what happens to it?
Yep.
Who are you, uh, suggesting receiving?
School board.
Okay, so.
At a board meeting.
At a board meeting, okay. All individual members receiving a copy?
Yeah, we provide a copy for everybody.
Okay, when's the next school board meeting? Monday?
Monday at six at the high school is one of the, I think Tom said September.
Okay, so if, if this is the final copy of the letter, I didn't know if the date needed change, since the date's a little older. Is this the final copy, other, I can send it around, everyone can sign it? We'll have a copy ready, if anybody can go to Monday's meeting, however you guys wanna do that. Does that sound good? That sounds good.
So we're gonna do it this coming Monday then?
Is that okay?
What, where is it at?
At the high school.
At the high school?
Six.
At six?
You did notice how little my name is on there, didn't you?
Yeah.
I was very humble.
That was, that was a one which has to change.
I was very humble about it, and I was at the meeting and Michael Mast was very upset that my name was so little on the God love you. I was humble, you know?
I will shame.
Thank you. I noticed it, but you know, what's in a name, I don't know.
All right, pass this over, we can sign it. Okay, moving right along, legislation. We have one-third reading, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero four by title only, and ordinance vacating parts of streets and alleys in the village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
All right, we have a second reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero five by title only, and ordinance amending the zoning map zone territory of the village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? We have the first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero six by title or only, and ordinance revising speed limits in the village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? We have the first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero seven by title only, and ordinance revising one-one-six-six-point-zero-three of the village ordinances. Are there any questions?
Nate, what, I mean, is there a, is because of the Stenwood running into?
No, it was more future, well, actually the, uh, the, the ordinance that's on there now, the, the rezoning is one that would apply. The current limit is four dwelling units per acre. The, the rezoning ordinance that we just did is on South Crawford Street, he has a duplex, a vacant lot, he was looking to add possibly a triplex, which would put him over. The discussion was that, you know, we've been pushing for housing, we need more housing in town. And the tiny home communities would have a hard time developing at four units per acre. A lot of the condo developments would probably be pushing it as well. So the, the thought was, let's, let's eliminate the four unit per acre requirement. They're all gonna come to planning and zoning board for review anyway, they're all gonna be in a special use district, let it be reviewed at that time as part of the development plan.
Okay. And, and actually related to those two properties on South Crawford, uh, part of the plans were, did include parking?
Yes, yes.
I was asked about that specifically. Okay.
I asked about that too.
Everybody did some.
Okay, any other questions on that one? All right, moving on, first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero eight by title only, and ordinance revising the village's water billing practices.
I had a question.
Bobby, I was gonna ask Bob, did.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this came up, um. Actually, uh, Marty brought this up, that there was a, a little bit of a mix-up because, the water bills came out and then they didn't have enough time to pay the water bill after the water bill came out. And it was pointed out that now, since we, um, we do everything electronically, whenever we read the meters, that we can actually, you know, process the bills and much quicker. So this schedule that you'll see here is what, I just sort of guessed that, you know, what would be inappropriate, ran it by Nate, Marty, Marion, uh, I didn't get any feedback back, and then I saw that it was in the back, I said, oh, okay, they, they approved it, so. Uh, as far as they're concerned, this is a good, a better schedule than what we have in our present ordinance. Any questions?
Our, our theory is back, back in the day, the guys went around with meter books and read and wrote the reading of each account. That took a lot of time to go from that to bring it in, somebody would enter it in. Now, they take the meter out, about half were meters, our radio read. We're, we're getting meters read much quicker, you come in, download it, it automatically populates the accounts. Basically, ordinance just didn't keep up with technology. We, we really came to life this last quarter, the bills were sent out at their normal time, got lost in processing or whatever's in Cleveland. They go to Cleveland and then they come back and get distributed, they're, they're like a postage, postcard stamp, or postcard size. Something with disorders, it doesn't like that size.
It likes to tear them up because they're thin.
They just, they didn't get out to the, to the account holders until like, what was it, like, first of August? There were some that were still getting them, some still haven't got them.
Stopped, I'm like.
Yeah, so, if anybody hasn't got your meter or your, your bill, your utility bill, call in, stop in, we can, we can print you one out. Um, we're looking at updates to our system that would allow for like a customer portal as well to help address the mailing issue. But this ordinance is just to address, we can do things much more efficiently and quicker now with, with the actual reading and input side of it.
The goal eventually will be, if people wanna pay online, they can get online, easily see what their bill is and easily pay and go paperless. And then for the people that still wanna get a bill, they can get a bill. That's the goal.
The problem I have with the post office, I mean, they're three or four weeks late. But when I get my bill, it, it, it's fine, I mean, there's no errors on it or anything, so. I think they're giving us some BS about why.
Got things to say, but I can't say it.
There's certainly huge delay from when we mail them to when they're getting brought back and distributed. And that's the only reason we've been given is they just, that size, it doesn't go through the automated whatever scanner.
So they get set to the side and.
They're not doing anything with them, that's all.
I don't know. That's out of our control, but we can, I mean, try to, certainly navigate it.
We can do what we can do, yeah, yeah.
The good old days, when you had local mail, you dropped it in a local box, it was delivered.
The next day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that too, those were good days. Now, your mail carrier gets paid by how many pieces go through Cleveland. So it's all different now. Any other questions on that?
I had a question about the ordinance. If, if you look at the, the ordinance as it is, is drafted up and you refer to the letter H, it says no allowance or rebate because of leaks. No deduction shall be made or rebate allowed to any customer of water because of leakage or alleged leakage in any water pipe, tank, or other apparatus or device. The amount of water registered by any meter shall be charged and paid for in.
The amount of water registered by any meter shall be charged and paid for in full regardless of whether such water, after having been registered, was lost by leakage accident or otherwise. In no case will rebates or discounts of the established water rates be permitted." We just forgave people earlier in the meeting.
The sewer portion.
So this has nothing to do-
So your sewer bill is based on your water bill. If you have a leak, you, you have to pay for the water regardless. But we'll credit you the sewer portion if it didn't go anywhere sewer. But we approved, well, we approved denial of credits on the sewer portion.
Okay. And I believe that wording is identical to the old ordinance, right?
It is, yeah, they changed that as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright, the last resolution is a one reading only. It is resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to pass?
Second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Shebaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Pollin?
Hmm.
And Khan?
Aye.
Okay, old business. Do you have any old business?
Yeah, I have something I would like to address on old business.
Okay.
So I would like to readdress, um, the flagpole, the Y. And I wanted to address a few things concerning that. So when I'd asked some questions and things kind of, I'm trying to keep track of things and things go fast. So I, I didn't have the chance to ask these questions. So, um, Brent, you had said that you had gotten a second estimate. And, um, who did you receive the other estimate from?
I, I did not get it, but it was from Dale, Dale Obringer, who's the president of the Lions Club, had gotten a second estimate. And I believe that was from Holmesville Electric. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's who it was from.
Alright. So was the estimate, this, so Dale would know whether the estimate, you don't know if it was exactly thirty-two hundred or thirty-two hundred or less. You wouldn't know that, Dale wouldn't be the one to have to tell me.
I don't remember the exact amount, uh, but yes, it was-
Was it lower than thirty-two hundred?
Very slightly.
What's that mean?
Very slightly.
And so the estimates weren't received in writing?
I can't speak to that, Dale received them.
Okay, so I would like to address something to the council, to my fellow council members. I, one of the things that I ran for council about was when I would notice in the meetings that things would get addressed and it was kind of, bam, bam, thank you ma'am. So something would get brought up at a meeting, something would get voted on, there weren't a lot of questions asked. So I would like, I'm gonna just say this, I'm a member of the Eagles, I'm just gonna say that, I'm a member of the Eagles. And I would like full disclosure of affiliation to an organization or any business that a council member may have when that entity is requesting money to be paid by the taxpayers. So, I, I think the Eagles is great, I think the Lions Club's great, but I think that should be disclosed when we're a member of that and we sit on this board and we ask for something on behalf of that organization. And I do not want that request to be dumped on us at the last minute at an open meeting. I want written estimates to be provided to all council members prior to the meeting. I would have liked, when that flagpole was brought up, that, that would have been told ahead of time and that written estimates could have been provided by anybody. I don't think it's too much to ask. I mean, I can tell you, for example, um, I had some electrical work done at my house. And I had one estimate given for eleven hundred dollars. And I thought, well, I'm gonna get a second estimate. And my second estimate was six fifty. Huge difference. That was my money, so when we do something here, that's the taxpayers that pay all of it. I was very fortunate to then, when they did the work, they only charged me six hundred. I feel that's the same way that the tax dollars that the people put in that we should. So that's what I'm asking for in the future. So, if we're a part of an entity and organization that we belong to, which I think's wonderful, but because we're a part of that and we're coming in front and we're asking, I think we should disclose that. There was an issue brought up during the campaigning last year about a similar situation. So I think that it's important that we disclose that. And I do want ahead of time to know that, so I would like that to be provided to all of us as to what the estimate is. And I would like it in writing. So, and I did have Bobby put in front of us. So it was a proposal for Millersburg Electric for the bill. For the, it was an S, for three thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. So, I, I would like that provided ahead of time, or I won't be voting on stuff and I'm gonna have issues with it. And I, I think I'm being reasonable.
I don't think that that's a lot to ask. Anybody else have any old business? Cause I have a list. Have we gotten our two of those parking signs? Cause I know we're getting some. No? Need to do that. I met with Taylor Sigler and Mark Foley and Harry to discuss Mary Millersburg on November twenty-third. We're going to have Mary Millersburg in the downtown. We're gonna have people from the Historical Society dressed up in Victorian clothing, walking around, talking to people about, the history of the buildings in the downtown. Uh, we're gonna have a window contest, uh, the chocolate walk is gonna be that same day. And we're hoping that this kind of grows and maybe we can do horse-drawn carriages and we're just hoping that it grows into, into something really cool. I wanted to discuss, I had, um, I've had probably a total of twenty-five people, maybe thirty, talk with me about the drive at Walmart, so I wanted to bring that up and discuss that. So, the drive, when you turn right at the light to go back around to go to Walmart, that road back to the curb is owned by, um, Holmes Rental. They have a contract with Walmart that Walmart will do the upkeep and painting, the striping of that road. Okay? So it was probably two and a half, three months ago, I talked to the new manager of Walmart, his name is Derek, um, about striping that. And then, right after that, like, two days later, Nate went out and talked to him, showed him what needed to be done, um, where the striping should be, um, since he's new, he's from New Philly. Um, and they did not have that contract from Holmes Rental, so Holmes Rental was going to get Walmart that contract. He did tell us at that time that it would take a while, that things with Walmart corporate take forever. So I know that this has been a big issue, I, myself have almost gotten hit multiple times because we have people from out of town that think that that's just too lane, not a turn in and then a turn out and then a, they don't know that it's three lanes because there's no, there's no striping there. But that is Walmart's responsibility to take care of that.
And that, the light where it tells you which lane to use, is that included in the striping?
Yep.
Yep, all of that.
Stop, bars, turn arrows, everything from the intersection again is theirs.
So the prosecutor had called me and then Gene Neville, I mean, I'm, I'm glad you're putting it out there because they're wanting to know what you're gonna do about it.
Yeah, well, Walmart has a contract with Holmes Rental and it's Walmart's responsibility to take care of that. So anybody who has an issue, call Derek at Walmart. He'll love that I put that out there too today.
You want to give his number?
I could, I could give that number too, let me hold on just a minute.
So the Kilbuck Bank branch was painted and I think sealed? So Kilbuck Bank did that section or who did that?
Walmart as well.
They did it though.
Yep.
That's their street. Evidently, they didn't know that this other portion was theirs to take care of because they, they striped the whole parking lot. It's all new, striping down there. So, yeah, that's the, that's the situation with the Walmart drive.
They've also only paved to the curb too, so they think that, and that's why some people drive up the center because of the policies.
Because of, yeah, yeah, they are creators, yeah. So I just wanted to put that out there. Nate and I met with, um, Taylor and Tiffany from the Chamber and Brett Galian and a few other people from the HDM Board to talk about, um, Ohio Magazine. We, um, one, they, every year they, um, award five best hometowns. And so we are the best hometown for northeastern Ohio. And so we will be on the cover of the November-December, um, magazine for Ohio Magazine. So they talked about how they give deals for, you know, um, they want, they, they really need sponsors for inside cover, back cover, back inside cover, and then they're gonna do a whole, um, spread in the middle of, of Millersburg. And then whoever wants to, um, get in on the advertising for that, they'll have that in the middle there. So, um, that is very exciting and I'm, I'm hoping that we can get a couple of, um, boxes of that magazine to have here at the village if people would like to buy that. So we had a discussion all about that, it was a long discussion, wasn't it?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. I also wanted to tell you something exciting. At the last council meeting, we talked about the grants that we are receiving to do the sidewalks for next year. I'm happy to report that we have more money for that. The Appalachian Grant has some excess money and, um, we are getting in on that, hopefully. So that will add another fifty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars to our sidewalk fund, which will bring us to a total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand and thirty-two dollars to do sidewalks and put the conduit underneath. So, that'll definitely do this half, I'm hoping, four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I would hope so.
I would hope so too, maybe a little more, but that was exciting. So, anyway, moving on, new business.
I would like to say, and I'm gonna donate a hundred dollars for the school kids to develop a Millersburg flag for our bicentennial. And as far as I'm concerned, we could open it up to the Holmes County or the Westone School District since we are one community in that way too. But I will give a hundred dollar prize money for it.
For the time capsule or just for the-
No, a village flag, a, you know, city village flag, yeah.
For the bicentennial?
Yeah, for our bicentennial year, but-
Okay, that's awesome. Well, we might add that in because we want to do a coloring contest. So we may do the flag contest at the same time and that way do all of that. That's awesome. Thank you, Bob.
So Kelly, I had a couple more new, new business.
Okay.
Alright, so another thing that came to my attention the last month was, um, so a few weeks ago or a couple weeks ago, a semi truck got jackknifed on South Washington Street. So they do the drop-off, I'm assuming it was a delivery drop-off at Amish Foods, comes up Diet Street. It was probably stuck there for, I don't know, two and a half hours maybe. It took, probably, yeah, it took about two and a half, there were divots on Diet's big, big chunks out of the road. Chief, do, do we know if that truck got ticketed?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, I hope that it did. And I think that its insurance should have to pay for the repair of the road. So I drove down South Matt Anthony today. And there's a couple of, you know, signs that are truck and then, I mean, they're just like a-
Like no truck.
Look like a box truck. So I, I feel, and you have to look for those signs. So I feel like we've got to do more to stop that. I mean, it did damage to the road. We had just, what had we just done to that Diet Street right before the, for, that ceiling or whatever? We had just done something. So you've got divots on South Wa, you've got big chunks that are gonna turn into potholes. So I don't know, there, there's gotta be something, more signs. Tickets need to be issued when the trucks do that.
Can we paint no through trucks on the street?
Probably could. We don't need, borrow the stencils from somebody, probably could.
I think they would see that. I mean, I called Dane. I called Dane and he said-
I'm just trying, big.
You, you said you had talked with them before, we kind of thought, that Amish Foods was trying to tell their people, do not, you gotta get back on thirty-nine, you gotta get back on eighty-three.
Yeah, it's been-
I mean-
Been happening since they've been in there.
Yeah.
We've talked to the facility manager over the years, different times, and hey, remind your delivery companies that they can't be coming up out of there, they get hung up every time.
Somewhere, we've lost a common sense of driving when we allow the Google Maps to tell us how to get somewhere. I mean, there's times that we're on that and I'm telling my husband, no, I think we go this way, but no, we're ending up in the back of the parking lot. So, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, there's some common sense that you shouldn't think you should be able to go up a little street and, and all that.
How much longer are they gonna be there? You know?
I don't know, I don't know what-
There's still semis that go down South Washington, I, I mean, that's still, there's still semis that'll go down South Washington.
But they're building an aisle out here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But there's still, there are still semis that have nothing to do with coming off of Amish Foods that are still going down South Washington. So we need bigger signs, tell them they can't do that, or, you know.
Wish there was a way to make better signage for South Washington right here for semis going down.
Yes, that they know.
The semis that go past our houses stagger.
That's crazy. Yeah, semis. I don't know how they're not taking out all the cars that are parked on the side of the-
So I would, I want, I would like that addressed. The, the third thing, and I talked to Nate about this, so the village, the parking lot across the street from the post office, so I'm there daily, three or four times a day. So you go up into the parking lot and you come down the parking lot. So what people are doing, this is in particular what I saw happen, but people are pulling in. So you're ending up the wrong direction in the parking lot. So you, common sense tells you, you go up the parking lot and you all park this direction, so there's people backing in. Then you come down and there's people the other way. So in particular, what I witnessed was, a construction truck with a trailer had come up, pulled in this way. So he's facing the wrong, he's facing this way, his trailer's in a spot on the other side. And he's, one car next to my husband's truck. So I'm watching him to see how he's gonna get out of there. So he's having to finagle, his guys had to get out. They literally had, if he would have tried to go around down, his trailer would have taken out a bunch of cars. So he, they, his guys got out, he finagled it up towards PNC Bank. They finagled the trailer, they then, this takes a while, so they've got it blocked. So if you're gonna come down the alley or you're gonna come down the lot, there's no, nobody's going anywhere. Then he, um, gets himself finagled and goes out the PNC's parking lot, which would have been the wrong direction also. Nate and I talked about that. You said there is a parking ordinance three-five-one point two-one, but we, you know, I don't, I know we're not ticketing people in the lot, but I don't know, that, that can't, that's, that just is a cluster and it's getting worse.
I can't honestly believe that he found two spots like that because I can't find a spot.
Yeah.
But, I, I was thinking about this the other day because I think that there are people that go and park there and are, leave their vehicles there for a long period of time. And so I thought maybe what we could do is have some discussions with our constituents, bring this back in September. What if we would change the timeframe? Is that something that we can do, Bob? Put it as eight hours instead of twenty-four hours.
There's a postal service truck that parks there from Friday, it sits there from Friday till Monday and it's a different county, Stark County or-
You can stand there.
Uh, the Cretchfield City Lot up here by the Cretchfield Hall, um, you've got the same thing going on there with people backing in the wrong way, coming in the wrong way, it's, it's a daily mess.
Yeah, yeah. So, think about that, think about changing the times, what, if, if, if that, if you guys think that that's something that we, that would help fix the issue.
Part of, excuse me, part of our discussion where we was, I don't know that that, I think the section we looked at applied to on-street.
On-street.
Is that some, that was a question we had, is that something, can we make a penalty for the private, not the private lots, but our, our lots that aren't on-street lots? If that's something we want to look at.
I mean, th, th, this is the thing, at twenty-seven years, everybody's not gonna get to park in that lot. So there are many times I park in that lot, but when there's not, I park clear down, I mean, I, I, I find wherever I can to park. So, you're, we'll never make everybody happy about everybody getting a park, you know, hotel park-
You can always find a parking spot, right?
What?
You can always find a-
Sure, I can. I may have to wa, I may have to walk a little bit. The parking lot over by Domino's is open a lot. So, but you might have to walk.
That's my attempt to get-
Absolutely. I always can find, yes, I can, Nate. I can, I can always find a spot. Couple other things. Um, someone contacted me, I don't like someones, I want you to give me your name and allow me to use it, but I will go ahead and ask that, what they wanted to know, is mos, is mosquito spraying done in the alleys?
Well, no, we don't hit alleys typically. It's the main routes.
Okay.
Really? I, I guess I, I thought I remembered them going through our back alley. Or at least they have at some point in the past. I guess I haven't paid attention lately, but.
I'd have to look at the map again, but I don't believe they are.
Okay.
It's mostly just-
Now, someone's gonna wanna know why we don't do alleys.
I mean, they'll do whatever we pay them to do, but it's gonna cost us a lot more. We're gonna hit all these alleys, too. There's, there's plays like we hit the trail. They hit the main drive of the cemetery to get that neighborhood fairview and that area. Um, there may be some alleys that they're doing that in to hit bigger areas, but for the most part, it's all the streets. I'm sure they'd be willing to give us a new price if we wanna add them.
I just thought I'd ask, I just wanted to ask the question. I just, people say, you know, they ask village council people, and I said I would be their voice, so. One more question. When did the Village Council decide to only have one meeting in the summer, June, July, and August? Because I just wanna say this. I think a lot goes on in the summer. And there was a lot to discuss tonight, and I feel like I've lost track of what's going on. I understand there's vacations, I understand all that. But the summertime is when a lot of the projects are going on, you've got festivals, you've got tourists, you've got a lot of things going on. And I feel like if the government, if the people are active, the government should be active. So I, I, I don't know how it started, but even if it was just July or August that we only did one meeting, but I, I really feel like I lost touch with what was going on and things that I saw over the course of a month. So I really think in the summer, there should be two meetings.
Can we vote on it at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, and we'll vote on that in January and we can have that discussion then.
And even if December was one meeting, or Jan, you know, you got harsh weathers and cold and less, you know, a little less projects, I could understand that.
I think like, we looked, I think Worcester takes the whole summer off.
Oh, that's amazing. I don't know.
And I think, you know, the big cities do that.
Well, well, that's fine if they wanna do that.
I think last year was the first year we did, this is the second.
Second year, right. The only time it's bad like this month, we had five weeks, so it seems like it's been a-
Yeah, it did seem-
A long time, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we'll discuss that in January. Um, I have just a couple of things. Um, Willa from Three Feathers Pewter, I had a conversation with her. She wanted me to make a suggestion to council to add an addendum to the bed tax ordinance to have it include a breakdown of last year's spending dollars that each entity received in order to be eligible for next year's bed tax dollars. So essentially, she, she would like a public record of what bed tax dollars were spent on by the four entities that receive our bed tax dollars. That was her suggestion to council.
Isn't that part of the paperwork that they file for their application every year?
We get their financial statements?
It's just their financial statements, but it, it, I don't think it breaks down the dollars we give them specifically. It, it breaks down all their dollars, right?
All their dollars, I think, but this is my first solo year with that. I'm just starting to get those applications out. Actually, I've written it and ready to send, so if we're gonna change anything for, for this year, we kinda need to-
And only our bill resolution wants to award it, too.
Well, we know how much they get. Her point was, she wants to know what they spend it on.
Oh.
It's not a matter of the dollar. She wants to know, you know, we gave four thousand and five hundred dollars to this, and we gave this mu- She wants, she would, she was asking for you guys to ask for a breakdown of the bed tax dollars.
Right now, they don't have to tell us what they spend it on?
It's required by the ordinance to spend it on, like, marketing and promotion of the Village of Millersburg. But there's nothing that says that they have to tell us exactly where they, you know.
So is she asking for like an itemized-
Yes.
Expense report from the previous year's award?
Yes.
As part of-
As part of the packet to be eligible for this year's. Does that make sense?
And, and is she asking for all of their funding streams where they spend that, or just what the-
No, just bed tax dollars that they get from the Village.
Well, I'm not sure if they track it that way. Um, you know that, that it would, if this money came from the Village, and Millersburg were spending on this, I imagine it probably just goes into their-
So their, yeah, their financial statements show obviously funds coming in and what their funds, you know, how each, how their funds were dispersed, what they's- Yeah, all of it, what they spent on marketing, what they spent on improvements, wha- whatever it is. So it's kind of, it's kinda in there, but it's not like a-
Right, like in HDMs, I know last year it said marketing, and then it was like ninety-four thousand and some dollars. And that's just, that's just all that it said. But-
So to ask them for some, some additional details on the funds that we give them, is that something that I can just revise the letter and ask for that, or does that have to be like actual legislation?
You can put it in legislation, but I think we could-
Just revise the letters?
Okay, okay. I'm glad I procrastinated. I was supposed to mail those out last Friday.
So procrastination is a good thing sometimes, but yeah, okay.
Well, she was asking me about that. We had a very long discussion and, and I said, well, I'll take that to council, and she goes, you tell them I asked for that. I said, I, I will. So I just, I just wondered if that was something that you guys would be interested in adding.
How are you gonna decide from the business side that they spent that money? I mean, what are you gonna use for a rule or to say, it's okay or it's not okay?
I don't think that that's the point. I think the point is just, we spent this on, on magazines, we spent this on internet, we spent this on... I, I think just having a, a general breakdown of where, where all of those, because a lot of the business owners didn't realize how much money some of these entities get. For example, HDM, and I'm not picking on HDM, but they were like, holy cow, where is that all going? And I, I, when we talked with HDM last, last year, they were fine with giving us breakdown of what they did.
You just said to be eligible for the other money. Well, if, if you're saying be eligible, that means, you know, it's not me, there's gotta be-
Well, according to the ordinance, it doesn't matter. They get the percentage no matter what. But ju- just asking-
I mean, I don't mind the reporting, it's just, if we're gonna say they gotta be, in order to be eligible for something, we gotta have something-
Well, that's what she said, and so that's why I added that in there. And it doesn't have to be like that. We could just say, we just wondered where you spent the money, you know? I just wondered what you guys all thought about that.
People want transparency, so.
I don't think any of them would have a hard time producing.
Oh, I don't either. I think they, and I think they'd all be fine with it.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we maybe ask them?
Yeah, it's just the eligibility thing that I-
Yeah, and, and I just wrote that down because that's what she had mentioned.
Right, like, I see what he's saying. So if we get a report back and it shows that, you know, that somebody questions the way that they spent, you know, a certain portion of the money, then do we say, well, then, you know, get it next year? I mean, that would open that can for us.
And, and I think that that would be a problem with the ordinance, because the ordinance specifically states the percentages each group gets, or the amount each group gets.
That's what I mean. It would open up all that.
It would open up the can, but yes.
Well, and each of those organizations have their own board, too, that is responsible for making sure. I mean, I'm not sure that it is, yes, we can suggest that they're more transparent, but I don't know that we can demand that they do that. Since that's kind of the job of their board if they-
If they decide to do that.
If they decide to do that, but.
Is that something we should add to the letter this year, or?
No.
Before Bob sends it out?
I'm good with, with looking at the wording. Do you guys want me to kinda revise the letter and then send out a, a copy for you to take a look at? And just do a, a quick verbal approval? I mean, I don't think the letter is dictated in, in the, you know, in the-
In the ordinance, I don't think that it is.
When are those due?
Um, they are due November. Yeah, yeah, plenty of time.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay.
I, I think that's great. Put something in writing and we can take a look at it.
Yeah.
I think it'd be neat to know what people are spending the money on, so.
And like Brent said, there's a board, so it's, it's, there's a lot of people and it's not one person that's specifically in charge of different things. So I think that's good. Is that okay with everyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then I had two other things, and I did have a discussion with Bob about this. This is not gonna surprise him. I wondered if council was interested in asking for bids for the solicitor position and the downtown flowers for next year? Or no?
I think we should.
The flowers are very nice this year.
So Nate, when I had given you Roots's information, remember Roots Lawn Care, I said they wanted to be considered?
Roots, yes.
Did you, did they ever contact you, or they didn't? Cause I told him to.
I never heard of it.
All right.
And I believe, I don't remember the exact time, but we usually order those pretty early, since the nursery grows on. They get started way before they show up here.
Mm-hmm.
If we're gonna do something different, we should probably do it relatively quickly, so they have time to sort something.
When we go to order those, this is a question that was presented to me this week. When we go to order those, solidify the plants for the baskets, um, do they give you an idea currently? Do they give you an idea of what they have in mind? Do we have input?
Not that I've been involved in. I don't know if Karen or Marty and Mary ever had discussions with them about, hey, we'd like to see this or that. I'm not a plant power guy, so I don't-
I don't, when I was on council, I don't think we ever talked about what specifically was going into them. They do look beautiful this year.
There's just a, there's a resident that, that kind of approached, I believe it was Mary, and just said that he would like to see more color and, um, and wondered what kinda input there, you know, what kind of input there was, uh, about, you know, during the planning stages of this. So I kinda had a feeling that Nate was probably more like, eh, you know, just do it. But if there was input, that Nate Hosteller from, um, from Copperleaf, I'm sure that he would be open to discussions prior to that. But if we're gonna bid it out, then that, you know, I don't know.
Nate, does our current contract with them state how often they water and fertilize and-
Yeah.
Trim and things like that? Okay. So that would be part of the bid process if we were to do that? I don't think a lot of people realize how labor-intensive that is to keep them looking as nice as they do. It's every day.
Early on, we tried hiring or getting volunteers to do the watering. We bought a watering cart. It was a nightmare. It was horrible. It's much better for a landscape company that has a truck set up to be able to get out and do them all, uh, rather than drag that cart around. It, it just didn't turn out well. So I would, I would definitely recommend we keep that part of the service.
I can't keep mine alive as long as they keep theirs and these alive. I can't do it.
Perennials are great.
Yeah, they are.
Well, I think that we'd be careful about what they plant in, I mean, being that they're all right on, along with the roads and the traffic. A lot of songs, but we'd have to, I'm sure the choices are somewhat, because we've had years where things haven't grown well.
And they, where they've had to replant after they all died.
And that blight from that last year.
We had that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, I asked Kim Kellogg what the secret was to keeping them looking nice, and he goes, gotta water every day. And I went, nah, there's a problem.
That's it, right there.
Somebody is, all right.
That's it. Is that something you guys are interested in, or no?
Um, for bidding those out, those, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah?
That's, it's an expense, you know, that, I think it costs more than people realize, you know, and the effort and energy it takes to water and take care of those flowers. They look beautiful, but, yeah, I, I'm okay with bidding it out.
I just thought if we were going to do that, now is the time to do that. We can't wait. Tom, Devon, you guys are okay with that, or no?
We're gonna include the Y, the South Y Maintenance on there, because we don't do any of that now. That wasn't a question, really. I was just saying.
We're doing that. Okay, anyone else have any new business?
Oh, uh, to kinda piggyback on something that Andrea said, we had a truck get stuck up at Port Washington. Uh, do you think, Nate, that, do you think there's a reason for trucks to be traveling north or west, whatever direction that is, on Port Washington, on this side of Glen Drive?
I mean, if they have a local delivery in there for some reason, but no, they shouldn't be.
I, I mean, what are your thoughts on maybe putting signs at Glen Drive for a truck route?
We've been working with Hardy Township. They're, they did a speed study on their portion of, of Port Washington Road.
Okay.
And they're putting, no, I'm sorry, no tree truck signs down at the south end-
Okay.
Of Port Washington. I told them, let me know, we'll put some up here, too. Um, wouldn't go ahead and do, we should just go ahead and do that whenever Thursday. I don't know any reason why trucks should be back there.
They're trying to avoid traffic like everybody else is.
Should you close it at Glen Drive at the roadies, then? So that they're not coming out of there and, I mean, they're coming up there making deliveries, but- otherwise you get out there and it says, no, no trucks at the end of Glen Drive and Port Washington Road.
I mean, you've got-
Well, I think they could still go southeast on Port Washington. It would just be going down-
Not, not Thursday, not at the township.
Hardy Township.
Well, theirs is down at fifty-eight or, or sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Yeah. Um, and that would certainly help, but I mean, obviously trucks do come up through there, ignoring the signs again.
Yeah.
But I think we should put signs, no trucks, and truck route directing onto Glen Drive would keep them from going up through there.
Maybe a park view.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Cause let me do that at the senior center and places up there getting deliveries.
Well, it's not your truck if they're making deliveries there, though.
Right, but tell them not to.
Not to go on-
Try, try to discourage them from going up to Port Washington, back to South Washington.
Is there any business, what, is it Max Millses down there?
Yeah, but you're talking way, way better.
But still, trucks could be coming through if there's anything down there business-wise.
I don't think there is till sixty-eight, right?
Just a noodle.
Noodle place, yeah.
I don't know if the coffee company or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know that Millersburg Coffee Company, they, I don't know, they get huge trucks. Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
There's definitely been an uptick in the number of trucks on that road.
I've seen them.
Um, you're right, they're trying to bypass them.
They're bypassing the traffic.
Or probably Google Maps.
Or if they're going east, if they're going east, that coming out of the roadies, that would be the way it would take them, yeah. Okay, any other new business? Any visitors wish to address council? Mr. Mullet?
Good evening, everyone. How we doing this evening? Are we ready to go home?
Yeah.
So I'll try to be quick here. Okay, I gotta sit the foundation here, so I have a couple of questions that need to ask. One I put to you for the, how many years in law enforcement have you had, Tom?
Forty.
Forty? Chief, how about yourself?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so we'll tell you the two, you got sixty-six years in law enforcement. Pretty accurate? Good. Last year, my property, we had weed killer sprayed three to four feet onto our grass. At the same time the weed killer was put down, we noticed that behind the barn that's owned by the tobacco hut, the weeds and grass were dying there at the same time my yard was dying from the, the spray. And we made a complaint about it, had a police report. And I was told, well, it was just, it was just an accident. Well, I have brought in a description from the dictionary of what reckless means. Marked by lack of proper caution, careless of consequences. And that leads to what just took place this spring again on our north boundary on the lot that's adjacent to the tobacco- On our north boundary on the lot that's adjacent to the tobacco hut, they had weeds and such grown. And all of a sudden, their weeds started to die off where they'd been sprayed, at the same time my yard starts dying off again. Good, uh, three spots about three feet deep into the property. And this is called criminal damaging. It states, no person shall cause or create a substantial risk of physical harm to any property of another without the other person's consent. Not only by any means. Recklessly by means of fire, explosion, flood, poison gas, poison, radioactive material, caustic or corrosive material, or other inherently dangerous agency or substance. So we saw that happen this spring, about the same time I, uh, came to the village in regards to a shipping container that was in violation of setback rules. And at that time, I asked Nate to come down and I said, you wanna explain to me why I didn't get a letter for a hearing? He said, yeah, cause he didn't have a permit. You remember that conversation? It was a very good answer, a very straight answer from Nate. And, uh, so then I start kinda, kinda curious after, uh, bringing that to the attention. My grass starts dying again from where it was sprayed. And I'm kinda wondering if that's called retaliation, which is a criminal offense. And, uh, I'll pass all this stuff if you guys can look at it. You can keep these. So Officer Garrett is the one that came down and took pictures and such. I told him, I said, or asked him, when you, uh, care what's gonna happen with this, let me know. I appreciate hearing something on this, one way or the other. Because last year, nobody wanted to do anything. He said, oh, it was just, it was just an accident. You know, it's called recklessness. So he takes the pictures and I don't hear from him. So I called the prosecutor's office this morning and I said, hey, can you tell me what the status of this report is that I had taken? And they said, well, no, we don't have any reports except for one from last year. I said, excuse me? No reports, huh? No, not at all. I said, you're sure? He goes, we are. So I made a phone call up here to the police department. Put that question to them. Can you explain to me why the prosecutor's office doesn't have a copy of the report? And now we'll jump back to Tom here and the chief here. We'll ask you a simple question. In your forty years as an officer, when you questioned somebody about whether or not they had done something that wasn't right, did they always tell you the truth, or did they try to lie to you most of the time?
Hence.
Did they tell you the truth every time? Did they tell you the truth every time?
Normally not.
Normally not. How about you, chief? Did you usually tell you the truth every time, or they kinda like not talk to? I agree with that. So if that's in mind, I didn't make, say who sprayed the weed killer on my property. But again, on my north boundary, all the grass was dead on the other side of the line on the tobacco hut. And it started dying out at the same time my yard started dying out. So it was told to me on the phone by the police department, and you can check the tapes on this, and I really suggest checking the tapes. You can hear all of what was said. That, uh, the officer talked to JJ and that, uh, he didn't know anything about who, who put any, uh, weed killer down through there. There's only two property owners there, and I can help folks in ours. I know I didn't put any weed killer down. Grass died on the north side of the line and on my property at the same time. I'd say it's a pretty good indication. I was also told on the phone that, uh, overspray and accidental stuff, that's not a criminal act. Read the paperwork I just passed out. Recklessly, poison without permission on somebody else's property. I put weed killer down on my north boundary with the warehouses, but before I do it, I pick up the phone and I call them. I said, do you guys mind if I put weed killer on the fence line? And they, no, go right ahead. But I asked them. I just don't do it. The law states. Without somebody else's permission, you can't do it. So therefore I asked, and they always granted. They have some, they don't have to cut the weeds either. So, and I asked why wasn't this report sent up to the prosecutor's office? Now, I need to hear that tape. But what I was told was that since you don't have any video of who did it, JJ, he doesn't know who put the weed killer down through there. And they named, uh, the administrator and the officer decided not to send it to the prosecutor's office. Now, that's on tape for the phone call today. What do we have to do to get a report sent to the prosecutor's office? The prosecutor makes the decisions unless the things have changed in the chain of command. I don't think they have. Mayor?
Chief?
You need to have a liable identifiable suspect. We don't have anybody that's saying as to who had the witness. You don't have any video from your storage. You have your video. Um, you know, we don't have anything that says that he did it. We've taken other reports from there.
Last year, you folks did. They owned up to it.
Okay.
And nothing was done.
That's not our decision. You just said that. Charging decision's prosecutor's office.
So what do we have to do to get a stop to criminal acts? That, uh, shipping container is still sitting there within.
I think you're asking something far beyond what I can control. I can control people from committing crime.
I, I can tell you that I've questioned, um, I'm the chairperson of the police commission, so you're welcome to come to the meeting on Thursday and, and see what we talk about.
This coming Thursday? What time?
Six thirty. You can ask questions to the chief and that. I have been concerned about people coming to me, the reports didn't make it to the prosecutor's office. And the chief can maybe answer those questions at the commission meeting of, of other things. I've tried to get a meeting together with the prosecutor's office and the chief, and the prosecutor's office declined. And, and, and that was, you know, I, I tried, he was, the chief was willing to sit down.
Well, I just found it awful strange that the grass dies on the north side of my property line the same time that it does where it's been shot on to our property and kills my grass too. But nobody knows how that weed killer got down all the way out on the property. Unless it just fell out of the sky out of a loop pass from an airplane or something, which I kinda seriously doubt that's the case. I think a little more investigation into it might shed a little light. Making false statements and lying, that's criminal act. It's called falsification. So maybe nobody cares about it being sprayed on my like about I do. So I would appreciate if you folks can, uh, put your hips together on this a little bit. And Andrea, I will take you up on that. Thursday at six thirty. That would be fine. And recklessly means if you aren't paying attention, lack of care or concerns of what you do, it's right in that section alone. I don't think I'm asking too much to have a stop. So, other than that, you folks ready to go home?
I am.
See ya.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Nate.
Alright, anyone have anything for executives? Is there anybody else that wants to talk? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, Ed- anything for executive session? Hearing nothing, do we have a motion for adjournment? Devon?
Hold on.
Hosteller.
Aye.
Tree maker.
Aye.
Kellogg. Yes, Vaughn.
Yes.
Thank you all so much for coming. Have a great evening.